Uh.
Now.
It's not.
It's about.
There's.
I don't know.
I'm.
I'm.
Okay.
Real.
I think.
Well, um.
And we can work.
We're.
Our.
I think.
So.
Don't.
It's.
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 But now.
Oh, I don't know.
I've got.
I've got.
Those.
Those.
Shop.
Back.
And.
But.
And.
There's.
Not.
My.
Data.
Probably.
Always.
Sorry.
Well, sorry.
They could be.
I'm.
Working.
Letters.
From.
She.
One.
She.
Got.
Better.
You.
Work.
She started.
You know.
You said.
What?
We didn't.
We didn't.
We didn't.
She's.
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 She waves.
Her.
With her number.
She's.
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 And.
She's.
Called.
This.
One.
It's one of the.
She's.
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 Glass.
Uh.
She's.
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 Not.
The lady is just not.
In.
The.
She's.
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 She has.
That.
Uh.
Which.
Well, there's.
She.
Yeah.
Don't.
Be.
She's.
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 Yes.
And I went.
Through.
Yeah.
More burgers.
Hey, you're doing so good.
Good.
Burger.
Yeah.
See.
We have no part.
I.
Didn't.
It's.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I found out that his messages were going to my spam for some. I didn't get them and then I wasn't getting them. I thought, well, I guess you just deleted.
And it's on vacation this week, so we're not going to practice this meeting, not even sing Sunday, but we are going to sing in the podcast.
Okay, Father's Day. Wonder what we're gonna see?
Yeah, you said.
Yeah.
Okay.
Find that out next week.
Already.
You know.
So you got a message already from him?
Well, hey, I'm just talking about what he said last week.
Oh, what's this? Okay. I should start getting messages from him because I took it, took him out of my.
Art.
Box.
But.
We don't have.
He.
We don't have.
Bobby.
But.
Yes, sir.
How could I say?
Go out there.
And.
We want to say that.
Um.
So.
So.
That.
We.
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 Hey, how you been doing? Y'all leave?
I'm good.
Wish we could meet on better terms.
Yeah.
But.
Would be nice.
We're here again, aren't we?
We.
Yeah.
Hmm.
All right.
Morning.
Good morning.
Mine.
I think enough of Commissioner Pearson being so many there.
Is out of town. Okay. Ready?
All right.
Hmm.
According to the clock, it is two minutes till ten. According to my phone, it is nine thirty-two. We will call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum present. Commissioner Pearson is out of town. Uh, item number two, discuss Texas Department of Emergency Management process for reporting damage caused by the recent storms. Who's, who's taking the ball? Ken, okay, you want to introduce yourself?
Ken, hello, Section P, uh, Infrastructure for the Texas Emergency Management.
Okay.
And I'll speak a little louder, but I guess gauge the, the law, the room, love, love, love the courthouse. Uh. I grew up in one of these older, uh, facilities.
Did you?
Signing place. I love them. They're bringing back some memories for trip. Um, what we're gonna talk about today is P stat, but I want to, I want everyone to understand exactly what it is we're doing and why we're doing it. So P stat is a milestone of what we're trying to achieve in order to issue some, uh, grant opportunities, uh, otherwise known as public assistance. So once your disaster occurs, we have to elevate, uh, numbers, so to speak.
Correct.
But we've already done the homes and, 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 uh, a large swath. That's different type of numbers. That's levels of damage versus cost. So now it's cost to the county. We have to be thresholds in order to do that. And this tool is just one of, uh, the, the methods that we use to milestone that process. Uh. Usually when we look at P stat as a function, this tool is for you all. You can use it this event and from henceforth. It's a free tool that we provide. Gives you basically four things we need. Who, where, how much, and then finally photographs to kind of document that. So, uh, the way, uh, our federal partners help put this together, some of that doesn't always.
That's.
But we'll walk you through what how and some other options. For example, your biggest cost or one of your biggest costs up to this point has been your employees, your vehicles, gas expense, all that type of what we call category B expense. We can't really photograph that, but we can document and validate that on the backend. So if you know what that number is, you can make one submission and literally take a picture of your courthouse, if you'd like, and say, okay, we've spent twenty thousand, fifty thousand, whatever that number is for category B. Uh, another category would be category A, which is going to be big for you. That's going to be.
Is it what?
Category A, which is debris.
Debris.
Debris is your biggest, uh, piece. I believe roads will be your biggest piece. And unless I hear something from any of the folks here, like if you've had a building, a lot of where you've had, uh, infrastructure dams, which you don't have a period, so to speak, uh, that you control their own, uh, notwithstanding those types of items, your, your categories are going to be pretty limited to A, B, and C that I can see unless someone, uh, knows anything, uh, they can report out.
You said A was debris and roads?
A is debris. B is for your, uh, expenses to operate, emergency, uh, emergency operation expenses. And C is roads. So those are the three categories that we'll be primarily talking about. The biggest key is to reach your two seventy-three, I believe, is your threshold.
Hmm.
So we got to find that number in order to be eligible for public assistance under our federal partners grant program. If you've had, uh,
That's uninsured loss.
Uninsured losses. Correct. So the first thing we ask for in our validation process, uh, but our federal partners, is your insurance policy for the county. So you've got a TAC policy, Texas Administration, or Association of Counties usually is what most counties go with. You have a TAC policy. We're gonna ask for your purchase policy on behalf of our federal partners and your pay policy. So we'll take those three to start with. That's the first thing. We always walk out of the door on any disaster is those three documents. Those get plugged into the validation, uh, system, which is not P stat. That's the next thing. I'm just trying to warn you what's down the net. So P stat's kind of the predicate. The next one's validated. Uh, so when you plan costs, they're just gonna look back to payroll policy and say, yep, we pay exactly what we're supposed to, or we purchase the way we're supposed to, and our federal partners are, uh, uh, will be, that'll suffice for what they need. When I say we, we're doing it on your behalf, we're your advocate. We really are the ones trying to help you get to where you need to be with our federal partners. It's all their rules that I'm laying out for you. These are not our rules. Uh, so when I have to say we gotta do this, we gotta do that. That's not because Texas is asking you to do it. That's because our federal partners will require it at the end of the day for you to be successful in. Brand. Uh. With that, we have, uh, we have this milestone gets us to that point. So this, by pushing this tool to your, uh, especially your road folks, and I'll go and train your road folks if you want to do that. Y'all might be the road folks, but if you have road administrator, or if you have any folks that are gonna go out in the field and do this, I'll happily pull them aside. We'll do it today if you'd like. And I'll put it in their, uh, phones. We'll get them going and we'll figure out what's going on out there. Uh, if y'all are gonna be the ones doing that, great. I was gonna try to forego any time, um, you know, respectively of your time. We go through this with y'all, or I can do it directly with folks who are gonna do the work. Maybe the one and the same.
Yeah.
I get that too.
And just go ahead and go through it with us.
Yes, sir.
So we have an idea what, what, uh.
So effectively what this tool is, it's an online and offline system. When you go online, this is what you see. This is available two twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You can use it. We're gonna do it today. If you want to do it in hands-on, we're gonna use the training piece right here. But this is what the website looks like. Bottom line is you're gonna download two or three apps to make it work. The applications that we're using and that you're looking at right here are, we're used around the world. Uh, they're secure. They're federal partners, state partners, pretty much every county and city in Texas uses, uses ArcGIS, which is the backend of this system. And then we're gonna have a couple of apps we're gonna upload into that, and that's how we do our business. Uh, we call it P stat and I stat. P is for the Public State of Texas Assessment Tool. That's what y'all are gonna be focused on in this meeting and for this exercise of this event. Uh, again, I'm just showing you what the webpage looks like. This is all the time. So if you forget or you need to come back to something, just go to this page here and you can do all your uploads and downloads. Um, what we're about to do is the hardest part, and it'll take us just a few minutes. If you want to structurally go through it, it's up to you, Jed.
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that. And with that, if you ever have a disaster, post this one that we're dealing with right now, which is called two four zero zero one four. You can always submit under the general incident, uh, in order to make it happen. That was just kind of an overview. All right. So what we want our citizens to report for our fine friends from the outside is the one on the left. It's called I set. We don't want to ever be in that as jurisdictional agents or jurisdictional, uh, folks. Ours are the one on the right. This is what we're gonna focus on today. I just want you to be aware that they're, they're both sit out there, uh, and they're very similar, but, uh, at the end of the day, yours is easier to use, intentionally so. Generally, we don't know who the owner is of a home, for example, so I can't put that information in. So your tool doesn't require it, whereas theirs does. Again, we're gonna be focusing on this one. There's usually where we have a lot of, uh, confusion. If you have a cell phone, you want to pull that out, turn on camera at this point, just like I'm doing here. And you can hover over this app like I'm doing here, and it will require you to download survey one, two, three. Once you download survey one, two, three on your phone, we download two more apps. If anybody's gonna do that, feel free to do that now. After you download this and this, we are ready to begin the process. It's pretty straightforward. It's designed to work online and offline, so you don't need cellular service because our assumption is that all of your technology is wiped out. As long as you have battery power on your device, it'll do the work. All right. For homes, this is what, uh, we would do as jurisdictional, uh, folks. Uh, make sure this is running. This is what the app would look like. We don't need to sign into anything. You just continue on through. This is what you've downloaded. It's these two apps into the survey one, two, three. Right now, we're gonna look at IA. We're gonna look at individual homes because we've always had Mrs. Smith that might be waving us down a week later saying, I got damage and I just reported.
Right.
This is how your folks would do that. So they'll have both in their phones when they go out in the field. Here, simply they put in whichever the event is. In this case, it's, uh, twenty-four, our double I fourteen. Uh, that right here, I'm doing the training exercises. So your agent would put in their name, so we could track who's doing the work on your side. And again, if it doesn't have a little red star, you don't need to fill it out because we don't know who these folks are in those cases. And again, we're focusing on homes. This, I took this offline, so it shows you that it does work with or without cellular service, so it's always available to your folks, even in a forest box. Skip through this a little bit and speed things up for you. Basically, we're essentially, uh, identifying a very specific address. We do require everybody to hand administer an address in addition to that map that we just showed. Uh, mainly because of the numerous street names that are populated. Uh, for example, I live on Hopkins Street, which is also known as Highway eighty, which is also known as Bajo Boulevard. Yeah. So whatever your resident wants to call their street or has been for fifty years, they can absolutely put that in. And that helps us track. These are homes. If they need help with any of these sorts of things with our VOD partners, which are volunteers organized to aid disaster or voluntary organizations aiding a disaster, that's where they would. If they have farm impacts, they can do that as well, and your folks can do it as well, depending on how you're, you're setting your folks out to do, uh, do, uh, assessments. Again, most of this has already been completed, but you will run into folks from time to time that are the one-offs, or we may need to go out and validate something to see if we can issue, uh, a higher range of, uh, individual assistance. And again, the last thing we have to do is have a photograph of what the damage is. And if you notice down here, you can already have photographs. We can do this on the backend. We have to on both products. So you don't have to run around. If you already have a work order system, you already have a ticket system, uh, which we'll talk about here in a second. When it comes to your public damages, we can do that on the backside. You don't have to run around again and look again at the same things. You already have documentation of it. Uh, and this, all this is demonstrating is that the, uh, product can work on and offline, so you can wait till you get back to your wifi and submit and push up. I'm gonna move forward. All right, uh, when we do this, we train our folks to look at different types of damage. Uh, for example, what you see here on the screen looks terrible, but really it doesn't affect the house, so it wouldn't count as a category, uh, a high category of loss. Same thing here, but we were just talking about this with one of the folks. Uh, there's might be a little roof leak. Again, it's, it's important, but it's not a high, it's not a destroyed structure, so it, it's got a little category range. For flooding scenarios, you see our flood line there is up high, and then we start to ramp up on our levels of damage.
Hmm.
And then obviously this side. Again, we're talking, uh, individual assistance, but I wanted to throw this out there because it is part of your, your P stat program.
Hmm.
You have both ends of it. And I'll push it here. All right. Uh, what you also can do if your folks are, uh, if you're sending out crews across the county, they can throw damage survey markers for nice properties that there is no impact areas, and they could show that on a map. So you can see all the damage over there to the left.
Hmm.
Where we spend a lot of time, and this is where you're seeing your guys driving around saying, okay, there's nothing wrong in any of those spots here. Those are what we call survey markers. So we give you that opportunity to kind of look at your, you can be in your office and see what everybody's doing at the same time. All right, now we're gonna focus on the P stat. That's what the, uh, both these programs fall into that category. P stat's a little different. This is the one that requires a little bit more focus. But again, only four items required. Who are you? Where are you? What is it? And how much? Uh, and then follow that up with photographs, and it's pretty much complete deal. It looks ominous because there's a lot of questions, but you don't have to answer all of the questions if you don't have the answers. Yeah, we're gonna jump into the app, make a quick collection. Looks very similar to the IA side. Who? Just picking up the order and then the type of government. So under potential applicant name, you'll put your county name. So Van Zandt would slide in there. And then off to go. In this case, I was doing the city of Phil, which is a native location. Again, populating the map, this is half the battle. If you get to where the located damage is, then our federal partners can isolate it on their mapping, uh, and we're halfway there. Let's speed past this piece. And then we're gonna hand you in the address. A lot of times we're bound on Farm and Market Road, and there is no marker. We get that. So you can put it FM, whatever the road might be. That's close enough because we have it on the, uh, geospatial, uh, map, so you're fine. What if you have like fifty roads? So they're, well, glad you brought that up. So what you can do, if they're spread out, you want to capture what are total cause of.
Need to, maybe run them by some of the things that they would put in.
Right. So let's run through, great question. You can do it one of a couple of ways. So let's, let's make sure. So here I'm doing roads because roads are a big, uh, piece. So I want to make sure y'all are tracking how roads, uh, are submitted. One, do you own it? Do you maintain it? So at the end of the day, if you can't prove maintenance on that road, that your validation's gonna fall off. This is our number one, uh, uh, issue typically is roadways. So the road needs to be significantly damaged. It needs to be a washout or a drainage out or a culvert out. That's generally what they'll cover. Their hot holes and that sort of thing that generally doesn't beat the criteria of damage to the federal partners. They'll make a claim back saying, well, it needs to be better maintained out with that. That kind of deal. So we'll walk you through what that looks like. We actually have another tool I can show you that we can show your road folks saying, this is what you're looking for. This will pass. This will not pass.
Should we do one for roads and one for debris separate?
So you can do it, uh, you can do it that way if you have documented proof across the county of where all these roads are and exactly what those costs are. So yes, you can only put in one submission if you want to do that, to answer your question as well. I find it more challenging if you don't have the geographical locations to speed up validation for you or the process.
So. What, what if we spent like, uh, I'll just use me, for example.
Sure.
We spent nine hours on one road, getting trees off. Now we went to another road, the man spent thirty minutes, another one, maybe an hour.
Right.
Do we? Each road we need to separate. It tells us how much time we spend on each road.
No, that would be what we call category, category B losses. So that's all emergency response. They're clearing roads or ramming stuff out of the way. That's all one function. That is, and it's really not category C. That's not the road damage. That's just stuff on the road and you were moving it out. So that would be one submission for all of that work for that day. That was, uh, that'd be category B. And your auditory.
A. Degree, debris.
A is debris. Once we move it from the roads, debris on the roads and you doing the emergency, hey, I gotta get through here. That's category B.
That's your labor and equipment.
That's right. That's your labor manpower because you're, you're not doing anything with the trees. You're just kicking them out of the way.
Right.
So you can get down the roads. That's the emergency response B category. Uh, you'll, you, your auditor or your, your finance folks have a pack. I think it's this thing from what I understand. Uh, all those costs, that's gonna be one submission. So you can uh, put that in now and then put another one in later. Once that goes up a little bit more, that's up to you. So absolutely, you just do one submission. Uh, and we'll walk you through how to do that piece. No problem. When we're talking six or eight roads that are wiped out, destroyed, you need to go to six or eight locations and show photographs of that damage in order to get that validation moving much quicker. I've had people put in one and say, I've got six roads and here's my number, and that's great. But if you don't have the photos and the location, so we're, we're kind of going backwards.
The detail.
Yeah, you gotta kind of get it on the front end. It really saves you on the back end.
So Virgil, like we used to go, we had FEMA and SBA in the vehicle with us going to the road, looking at it. We don't, they don't do that anymore. FEMA didn't come. They look at these pictures and that's how they go with it.
Goes much faster.
Yeah, but we don't get to explain the real problem. That's.
Well, they, they do, uh, you, if they deny or decline, you do have that opportunity. So that you haven't lost that.
What about the total debris? Do we need to save the total debris? Yeah, like. And one, when we start picking this debris up, sorry, I had.
Understood.
Did so much.
Yeah.
I live still now. But do we need to, uh, like haul all this debris in one place and then take pictures of that debris?
You can do it one of two ways. And you, we need to move forward on trying to calculate what your total cubic yard of waste is, wherever it might be. And folks can do that by measuring piles as they're driving around. Yes, you can put it all in here if you want, or you can just calculate, uh, show, uh, a total cost. However, you want to do it. I've seen people do it both ways. Uh, it's a little bit better for you if you have troops out doing that work to just, if they're sitting there staring at it, take a dark picture of it. Hey, it tells me where you're at. Tell them you're saying how much, uh, debris is there.
So do we estimate it because we cleared them all off now?
You've already moved all the product?
We, we've cleared it off of the road.
Correct. That's.
We're probably not gonna get them off of the ditches until this fall winter. So do we estimate what it's gonna be?
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be six months down the road before we get it all cleared off?
Yes, sir. You'll do that by cubic yard, and you fix a fixed price per cubic yard. So you look at a washing machine as a cubic yard and go around and go, okay, I got ten washing machines, ten, ten cubic yards of waste. You have to fill out a price. Generally, it's as high as twenty-seven dollars a cubic yard, depending on a lot of circumstances. And I've seen some as low as nine dollars a cubic yard. It just, we have to figure that out and just be consistent with whatever number you pick, so we can up or lower that, that cost based on what your circumstances are here.
One cubic yard of washing machine.
Yes.
What is something?
Exactly.
If you have a lot of cubic yards out there.
You've got a lot of cubic yards. You do. Absolutely. So that's how your folks can measure on the quick. Uh, but it's, we have a calculator for that too. So we'll train your folks, if you'd like, to see what if you, how to measure a pile and they give you round numbers. And you don't have to be perfect. You don't have to be a hundred percent right, as long as you're consistent and you're demonstrating the, the need and the loss and the value. That's all we're trying to.
Are you planning on moving the debris yourself in Burn again, or what's the plan?
Uh, for me, my plan is, uh, we, we've got a place that we can take it, or I hope we have a place that we can take it and poll it and burn it. Well, that's, uh, that's some of the options we want to talk about.
Sure.
We'll wait until after we get through all this and then we'll.
I'll push.
Find out what our options are.
Yes. You want me to push throughout this to you?
Yes.
All right. So let's finish up with roads, which is gonna be in work. And honestly, we really want to focus on our big cost items. So if you've got some washed out roads, we need to start there. So I like to tell people, what's your hundred thousand dollar loss? Take me to it. Okay, you don't have one? Take it to your fifty thousand dollar loss to start working our way down until we get our high cost. Let's get those in the system so we can see where you're going and see where you're at. Really speaks that. Uh, here, this is a little key in the bottom of the app itself. It's hard for you to see up there and I understand, but you can look at it. It's a little, I've got some other, uh, pages I can bring to you. Under each category, as it lays across the top, this is what we have to prove on the backend. So those little Xs, for example, in category C, you have to have photos, uh, work completed. You have to demonstrate that historic costs. You have to prove that for the road. Uh, you have to prove, uh, codes and standards that you use, that you use in national standard for building your, your, uh, roadway, culvert send deep, you're using the right compaction and all that. Uh, for federal partners. This is what they need to see on the backend. So yes, we have a photo. Yes, we did a P stat, but there's more to follow uh, to kind of demonstrate that you're actually, uh, applying with the, uh, the grant requirements that they're gonna ask later.
Is that a check off or?
Yes, sir.
Just check it that.
Well, no, sir, you have to actually, uh, Well, no, sir, you have to actually, uh, produce a document saying, yes, sir, yes, we use, uh, uh, this is what we actually did, so our road crew was out there for nine hours. So it's kind of apples and oranges here, if they were working on the road for nine hours, we're showing, we had a front end loader, we had a roller, we had asphalt, we did all these things, and here's all the receipts, here's all the work order tickets, here's the people that did the work, it's called work tours. And from that, you submit that, you submit photos, submit the location. Then, then we're on for the cost. So you have to do that for each location of road repair. For debris, it's a toss-up, you bring it to one place where you're just going around and doing it total either way. Uh, from what I'm looking at and the amount of time you have available, we need to go around and look. And do it that way, not wait to compile it, can't wait six months, uh. Because we gotta get you to the thresholds, we can get you a nod if it's available, so we can do four nod brands.
So we need to get pictures of whatever the, the loss that we need to go look at.
You need locations, photos, and value, value of loss, so value of loss, cubic yards is that value of loss when it comes to debris. And I know I'm kind of skipping around with the, the values, but, uh, I think you're getting the, uh, laying out there.
So what we, what we've already stabilized some areas in the road, but we didn't take before pictures, we just went out there and got it stabilized, people can get down.
That's fine, so what they normally do is they'll do a, uh, a Google road look, they've got satellite imagery before, that's what they look at, and they look at what your current is. So yes, we don't have time to do you know, the roads washed, you're moving on it, I get it, so does it, so do they. Uh, that's an excellent question, or staple, because they, uh, that does come up, but it's just like a car wreck. Uh, that's exactly what they're doing, they want to know where, where the wreck happened, how bad was it at the time, if you can. And if you can't, then you kind of fill in the blanks with other reports. Because your, your work order ticket says exactly what the guys did, I did this, 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 okay, you're, you're good. As long as you didn't write that work order ticket today, and it happened two weeks ago, you're in really good shape. That's, that, that's another thing that sometimes pops up, so can't, can't go backwards. It is what it is when you get in the work. So documentation is crucial, it's all exercise. Okay. Uh, and effectively, again, we're doing the top one, not the bottom one, so the bottom is when we're looking at Mrs. Smith's house. And the top one is what we're talking about today, in, in, in essence, is the, the public damages. So we go out and literally look at this road and say, okay, folks, how much for, that looks like, uh, two inch asphalt. Patching all the things, what's my cost for that amount of value? And take a photograph of that, show them where it's at, show them the work order that you've already done. Uh, all that work, and it might be a fixed road that we're showing, but that's fine. You just have to give them those numbers. Uh, when we're done doing that, we have to show them that, yes, we've been maintaining this road, yes, we built it back to the specification it's supposed to be. All those things that are on that checklist, that's the validation. This is category B we were talking about, this is where you take all the costs of all the things you did in the emergency, which is two or three days of getting after it, moving things out of the way. Piling into one cost, you can submit one function for that, and then later on we'll say, okay, give us all the receipt.
We don't have receipts.
So to speak, uh, invoices, work order tickets, uh, those types of receipts, anything that, uh, was written down, gas tickets. All of that does a cost, all that gets piled, submitted, you do that under one, uh, submission to help reach that magic number that we're trying to get to, which is about two seventy-three. Uh, again, we're, again, trying to follow, validate this, which is all your debris category A. Uh, and push through on getting your cost, find out what your real impacts are, to begin get you into the system. That's pretty much a piece, that's a very simple tool. It's, uh, easy to use, and we'll be happy to put it in anybody's device to make that easier for those.
We download this on our computer, office computers.
You can do that as well, yes. If you already have a lot of this in your computer because your guys took photos, they downloaded it to you, no problem. You don't need to drive out there, if you know where the location is, you can push that map function, type in the address, or you can just sit there and use the scrollor till you find exactly where that road to images, push it. And scroll on down, start loading photographs in. And then you can, uh, uh, give us that cost estimate, it's a big very easy to do for your, uh, desktop, yes, sir. In fact, everything you saw, I did from my desk. I didn't have to drive around and do any of it, because somebody's already done the photos, somebody's already got the, the work orders and the, the receipts, kind of proved it, yep, that's where, that's, that fits. You don't have to produce those receipts today, all we need is the location, the photo, and the, the cost of damage. And about two or three weeks from now, we're gonna say, okay, here's your Dropbox. And start dumping all the, the receipts or whatever you want to call it.
I still got a question with receipts, because we're not gonna have receipts. Uh, we did it ourselves, I mean, I can't give you a receipt for.
You're gonna have, uh, we'll have received twelve, we've ordered asphalt, and we use that.
Yeah.
Yeah, again. I mean, as far as receipts for how many hours it took or?
Like your time sheet?
Your time sheet, right. Those are all considered, that's the, that's your cost, so those are receipts, you paying somebody to go out there and do all that work, they're, it's written down somewhere. And that's all we're gonna, gonna need to see a copy of.
Do we take into consideration how many hours it took, using the, not just manpower, but equipment also?
Absolutely, each piece of equipment has a fixed cost associated with it, that our federal partners has a schedule that can get you access to. For example, a police car sitting in, just sitting in traffic, blocking a road is like six dollars fifty-two cents an hour for that car, he turns on his overheads, it's seven dollars an hour. If it's a front end loader of a certain size and weight, you get fifty dollars an hour, and if it's a higher, if it's got three more cylinders in it, or four more cylinders in it, you get seventy dollars. So it's all respective, what you lose.
And also I take some extra share benefits and insurance.
Right, see. Good.
It's your benefits and insurance on that.
Your employee.
So, um, the, the two seventy-three, is that going to come from both PSAT and ISAT?
No, ma'am, no, sir, it's only PSAT. So only the structural, infrastructure damages of your county collated in the cost numbers.
Okay.
Homes are calculated by total number, has nothing to do with value.
Okay.
It's level of damage for the individual, so pretty much you can parse that out of the conversation when it comes to get to that two seventy-three.
Okay. Okay, so, and, and my understanding, I'm, I'm learning this new off, for it, is, is in order to, there's a hierarchy of, of disaster declarations you have to go through, and the first one being, you have to declare a local disaster.
Correct.
And then the governor has to declare disaster for your particular county.
Correct.
So that has happened, both of those have happened.
Correct.
But then the next, the federal government has to declare a disaster.
Correct.
Which that has not happened at this point in time.
Correct.
That, the, the ones that have gotten the, uh, federal disaster declaration or for the those that applied on April twenty-sixth for the first round, but the second and third rounds, they haven't, so we have to wait until that occurs.
No, sir, in order to get that, you have to do this in order to get that declaration.
Okay.
And we have to prove to them.
Okay. So, and then the only assistance that's available is through FEMA? In other words, is there state assistance available for disasters, emergencies, or is it all coming from federal?
So the state of Texas doesn't have a specific fund, so to speak, but there are other programs that are available. But they're very, depends on what the scenario is, so if you're talking uh, water, for example, we have Texas Water Board, they have funding available, you have other federal programs as well, along with some state programs. Uh, for housing, which is a different conversation than your infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
So if there is, there a ticket for infrastructure, so to speak, in Texas, it's parsed aside, no.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's, it's, uh, it's broken down into, like I said, multiple categories from infrastructure to our correction, water, wastewater. Uh, that we have, like I said, we have some of those available, but past that, uh, the state doesn't hold.
State, okay.
Okay, and it has a state, brings you to the threshold?
We're still, we're still doing the same thing you're doing, ours is obviously a little bit bigger, we have to beat the fifty-three million dollar threshold. Utilizing all of the counties, uh, their damages, plus what our costs were, we're still in the process of doing the same thing you are.
When is, is there a timeline we need to have this done?
Yes, sir, uh, so technically, they say thirty days, but you can't wait thirty days.
Right.
Need to move as expeditiously as possible. Because it's.
So our date, our end date that FEMA has to have their, the minutes to come set in. And that means everything has to be validated and approved and done.
By June twenty?
By June twenty-second, so we need y'all to have yours in, at least by the end of next week.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Because it'll make this work.
Yes, sir, I know.
Photos are easy, it's the validation part, that's, that's what they.
So it has to go through y'all enter it, then it has to go through T D N validation, and then FEMA has to validate it before we can make any decisions, so.
All right, so hypothetically, they say this week we got more coming, what if that happens, I mean, this keeps on?
Yeah.
Does it?
So we were working with Smith County and last week, uh, Friday, they sent their road bridge crews out, doubled them up, two people at a time, and they went to each road, took pictures. Fill the information in on that. And went to another location, so it, it's just getting down, your people down and getting in, I mean, it took them, what, twenty minutes to train them, train the guys, download the program, train them and get them out there, but.
Nine teams of two, and we, we could watch the ISAT, I mean, the PSAT, if they did like fifteen. And everyone back out today, they'll probably do at least fifty, can't have it to those processes up there.
Doesn't take long.
The major, the major stuff.
Start big, start with your biggest cost, work down.
Okay. You, you had some bridges, did you have any bridges damaged?
So we've got.
What? What's the date that it starts?
Twenty-sixth of April.
Twenty-sixth of April, okay.
If you have any culvert, it's said washed out, those would be good to start with.
What if? I didn't know this, I'm the new guy here, uh, we had a culvert washed out from the first one. And we fixed it the next day. And I don't know if I got pictures or not. Do I, did we? Well, I got, I got the paperwork for the culvert, I got when we did it, and like, you know, I've, I've got the side, it's on the, the hey, it is a washed out, I got.
You got the worksheet that shows who did it, what equipment they used, what material you used, and it's stated.
You said, next week, what is the date next week?
I mean, how would you?
I mean, Friday, next Friday, or?
At least have some of your major stuff in mind this Friday.
Okay.
Want to try to tie that threshold to, A, figure out if you're close.
If you're gonna meet the threshold.
So we're, we're in budget hearings all next week. So we're gonna have to.
Make sure you don't have to do it, you've got crews that can do it for you.
Should have had a foreman here.
So we can teach your foreman how to do it, it's not that hard, it's very easy.
We've done an entire town in hours, if you have enough folks, you, this doesn't take very long to do. Because all they're doing is driving around going, yep, yep, it's the backend, which takes a little time.
So who do we contact? You, Dionne, about scheduling the training?
You can, he's, he's here, we can do it today.
Okay.
Just call our foremen today.
Yeah, yeah, we're on top of the string. Pretty, pretty quick.
I may throw in there too, uh, working with your electrical co-ops, that contributes to any of their costs, damages.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Virgil, I don't, I don't know about Seb's, but oh, yours, their, mine's old school and yours is old school, you might want to bring in a young guy who knows technology.
So I'm starting with this right here.
Yeah.
This is my school, so I can do it, they can do it, and that, that's really high-speed guys that were thirty years in the road business, never used a cell phone, they were teaching the young kids, excited with twenty minutes, I'll do it, that's.
Well, uh, I need to get my foreman in here.
Yeah, so do I.
What, uh, you want to try to do something, uh, back for lunch or?
I'm here, 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 need, that's why I'm here today, so today, tomorrow, whatever we're gonna do, it's ten fifteen.
Mine takes once at eleven.
Seventeen?
About one o'clock.
Either way, whatever you want to do. Work for her this week.
Yeah, one o'clock, good?
No.
Yeah, sorry, I was, I was nodding at him, you guys are good.
Yes, we'll make it work at one o'clock, one minute, somebody will be here to teach you the, the stat and all.
You know, bring my foreman in, I gotta say thank you to Vicky and Jim and Aaron back, they came out to my office last week and trained my administrative assistants.
And you sure.
You come out last week and trained my administrative assistants. Uh, one other, other thing, I wanted to find out what our options are for debris removal. And what, what is the best way to go about doing that? Or is that up to us to figure out?
It's a, well, there's a lot of options, so, but it's a deep conversation when it comes to debris, that's the big one. A, you have a contract with, uh, generally debris companies, uh, most counties don't, some do. Uh, start with that conversation, then we work our way down to whether you're gonna do it yourselves, using workforce. And what that cost is, your time, and the things you're takes away from, uh, C, are you going to engage in a contract with a third party to do the work for you? Uh, but again, I, it's, uh, need to know how big is that and how big, you know, it is before.
If we engage in a contract for a third party to do it, with that their estimate or what it would cost, would that apply to this? Since we're not doing it?
No, well, no, you, you don't get to use their estimate, you have to provide an estimate, and the, uh, our federal partners. Deal with that, you can't, can't let that other one talk.
Mm-hmm, well, on that note, it's maybe more of a sanity and Vicky question. If we're gonna contract it, are we going to go through a bid process and wait around, or can we use the emergency and put it out there?
I highly recommend you do not do an emergency because your emergency is it's, it's kind of like using the joint bank account with your spouse, what you consider emergency, what they consider emergency. So, and remember, the bank account is with our federal partners, not even us, we can't even speak on their behalf or your behalf. We advocate for you, but we have to be careful how we uh, what we call an emergency and what they, they just might decide, well, your emergency was, uh, even though we have all the paperwork, I get that. But accident circumstances are it's like the bridge is gonna fall if we don't do something, kind of deal, not add debris on my road and a week or two out. We have to show something a little bit more ominous about to happen, make that work, without costing y'all. I, I was a local for thirty years, trust me, I got caught in this trap of where I thought it was a thing and I did it and it was wrong, and it cost me, so I don't want that to happen to you. So like, speaking of the state guy, that forever.
So I'm sort of, for sure, you have to go to our, either federal standards or your side, if your, your standards are higher than FEMA. Then you use yours, and there's a higher, you can use theirs.
Oh, happily visit with your finance people and walk them through exactly what to look for, what they.
Mm-hmm.
So, and I can only go back to the seventeen, I was during seventeen, we had dumpster contracts. So each of you have dumpsters that we use for anything but green debris. Um, which should burn. Anything but. Then we also had this, that in Burner, you remember this, we had designated green debris sites. That, that, uh, T C U came in and validated. And they were to take green debris there, and they'd be burning it, but only green debris. Rest of that, some of that went to each of the barns, and when the dumpster got full, we had new dumpsters to put in. And we had a large request, I know the judge has got several calls about, about what do we do with this debris. City of Canton is from what I understand, they're bundling, letting people bundle, bring food. Bundles, number one, forty pounds, and then, uh, what is it, I don't know, they're, it's, it's picking them up, it has to be bundled, it has to be certain sizes and that sort of.
And do we have to man? I guess we do. Uh, who manned in two thousand seventeen, who manned the green debris sites?
So some of those were owned, uh, if it comes to parking, that's, I remember, one, some of those owned public, I mean, owned privately, Chris, that war was owned privately.
We had a renting place, remember out at Murrah Spring, we rented that lot, then, so that's where we took all of our debris, and that's where y'all came in and took pictures of it.
Right, and it, it doesn't matter where you want to take the debris, it has to be approved by T C E.
Right, that's for you for it.
Whether it's land owned by you or land owned by someone else that you're renting, it has to be approved by T C E.
Before we burn it.
Before, no, before you done it.
You got it.
Before anything.
Oh, the land site has to be approved.
Yes.
Or is this a site for the public to will or?
That's their determination, it doesn't matter, any site that has debris on, has to be approved by T C E.
Yes, and Virgil didn't make didn't open the dock out there for a period of time. But I'm thinking that at one day, not for very long, but.
They, they did just for other items that were in the ditches and stuff like that.
Not.
Not.
Not green.
Yeah, not green.
We also placed dumpster, at various locations, which you've been sending, I don't know, I think, but we had a lot of not green debris, and so we had dumpster spines in various locations around the county, we had one of it, a lot of damage there. Uh, and when that one would get old, we'd take that out, bring it up, and I think you got a couple down in your present as well. Maybe down at, uh, Vettel, Old Vettel.
It's not like we're dealing with a tornado debris, right, with the house debris instead, majority of it's going to be through.
Probably some shingles and some sheetrock and some stuff like that, but not in that highway or, you know, or where.
Would we need to get, uh, for this private property, a, a contract with a land owner? Would we need to get, uh, for this private property, a, a contract with a land owner? Well, they had to sign a little contract, would we have to pay them something? I, I mean, they could just.
That's gonna be more than them, yeah.
But again, I think that's.
They gotta look at it before we get the contract.
Well, it's not, they will be that, they have that capabilities that you look at, so yeah, let's do it, we'll give you a verbal. We'll do it officially tomorrow.
And, and there's some, well, my hobby turtles sitting there, right, building like this little turn, the tunnels underneath it.
But the other issue too is, you gotta have good roads, wherever the site is for trucks and whatnot to, to bring stuff in.
Gotta be dry.
Yeah.
They had dry up.
And remember, we use those only for officials, we did not let contractors go in there.
Oh, yeah.
Contractors get paid, all that, the law, yes, so we didn't let any contractor go in. We only did that for individuals.
So anything you do, if you're, it needs to be monitored, in other words, we're watching out for that exact thing she just, she just responded to. So our federal partners won't pay for that either, they'll say, oh, that's contractor waste. And it, it's not hard to figure that out, especially when people are like, I got to dump all my stuff over the thing.
And, and you'll get a lot of this insurance pay for
Right.
them to come clear that house of all the debris and all of a sudden, boom, we don't have to pay disposal that, we can go right there.
Engage a contract, it's really two contracts, one for monitoring and one for debris disposal, or you might do a monitoring. Uh, if you do contracts, you can monitor your own work, you just have a document through monitoring. So you can do that, do that for it.
And I suggest taking pictures of the loads.
Again, a, a very formal conversation in another setting with your road folks, your whoever decision maker.
Anything else? We got work to do, one o'clock, right? One of the training is, right here. Yeah, be fun. All right, thank you so much. It's ten twenty one. And we are adjourned.
Okay, uh, what is the, uh?
Time to change your calendar. Does somebody wanna contact Keith? Uh, is there a moment to adjourn?
Don't move.
Respect, I'll say all of the favorite adjournments, hey, I.
Uh.
I'll tell it's my time, motion pass, um. He can, if somebody contacts the precinct three foreman, sort of about being here for training.
Said, yeah.
Okay, thank you.